Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It is Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock, and it's time for the regular Grinnell City Council meeting. So we call the meeting order. Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes. Next item is perfecting an approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
White. Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Next item is consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
I move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Next is a listing of meeting minutes and communications from the various committees of the council, Public Works, Public Safety, Finance, Parks and Rec, as well as Veterans Memorial Commission Meeting, Board of Adjustment, and Planning and Zoning. You can also find on the website all the minutes on these meetings, as well as the Treasurers Report and the Monthly Police Report. Next, we have a public hearing. This public hearing is on the proposed plans and specifications, proposed form of contract, and estimate of cost for construction for the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat project. Are there any comments or any communications?
No.
Anything from the audience?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
And seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes. Next, we'll move into committee business. First is Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Agnew. The Finance Committee met this morning at eight AM in the second-floor conference room. There were seven items on the agenda, and there were no inquiries. The first is a resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase five million one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of general obligation capital, no note series twenty twenty-two. On behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one eighteen.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
Ray.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
The second item is approval of a resolution updating the Personnel Policy Manual, actually the specific bereavement funeral leave. This is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one nineteen. And once again, this can be found on the website, too. And so on behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one nineteen.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Please, Ann.
Ray. Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
The third item is approval of a resolution authorizing payment of a grant not to exceed ten thousand dollars for tuck pointing of the Grinnell Area Arts Council Building, formerly known as the Stewart Library Building at nine twenty-six Broad Street, for benefits to the public due to the enhancement of the cultural environment of downtown Grinnell. We had talked about this previously at a couple of meetings prior to this. The money for this will come from the hotel motel tax. On behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question. Roll call, please.
Ray.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
The fourth item is approving a resolution providing for an additional ten percent incentive to hotels that receive Iowa Economic Development Authority funding for holding conventions, meetings, et cetera, that bring visitors to the city of Grinnell. On behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-one.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question. Roll call, please.
Ray.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
The next item is approval of a resolution approving the quote from Keeper Security Incorporated for password security, and this allows for up to fifteen of our administrative people to be able to access this particular piece of software. On behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-two.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion?
Call for question. Roll call, please.
Ray. White. Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to write off as uncollectible certain water solid waste sewer, storm sewer accounts and accounts receivable. It's rather small this time, which is very good. The amount is one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents. And on behalf of the committee, I so move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-three.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question. Roll call, please, Ann.
Ray. Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
The last item was review results of the cyber audit performed by the Iowa Community Assurance Pool, and we reviewed those today in Finance and authorized the staff to go ahead and make the necessary changes. There was no action that was needed, and that completes my report.
Thank you very much, committee. Appreciate your work. Next, report from Public Works and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Works and Grounds Committee met here in the Council Chamber at four forty-five this afternoon. We took up ten items and had no inquiries. Our first item was a resolution awarding the contract for the Fourth Avenue Bridge Project to Iowa Bridge and Culvert, L.C. of Washington, Iowa, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. With the committee's recommendation, I move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-four awarding that contract.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for the question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Our second item was a resolution approving the proposed plans and specifications, proposed form of contract, estimate of cost for construction for the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat project. With the committee's recommendation, I move twenty twenty, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-five.
Second. Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Our third item was a resolution awarding the contract for the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat project to Manats Incorporated. With the committee's recommendation, I move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-six.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for the question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Our fourth item was consideration of approval of change order number one for the water main replacement project. With the committee's recommendation, I move Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-seven doing so.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Our fifth item was consideration of approval of setting a public hearing date on the status of the funds for the southeast sewer lining project for July fifth. With the committee's recommendation, I so move.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for the question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Our sixth item was consideration of approval of setting a public hearing date on the status of the funds for the CDBG facade project, again for July fifth. With the committee's recommendation, I move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White. Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Our seventh item was consideration of approval of a right-of-way request for work from a Haskett Communication Group in the area from Eighth Avenue to First Avenue, Ferguson Road to West Street. With the committee's recommendation, I move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
The question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Our eighth item was consideration of approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board for Garden Club Pollinator Garden at the east end of Merrill Park. With the committee's recommendation, I move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
For the question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard. White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Our ninth item was to authorize the mayor to create a water customer advisory committee pertaining to the design of a new water plant and a system-wide assessment. This advisory committee would be looking at aesthetics and building design, et cetera, not necess, not, not the actual water treatment facility itself. With the committee's recommendation, I move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Our tenth and final item was a discussion on the water system pressure loss and the service interruption we suffered a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to ask Jordan to come up and give us his take on what happened and how it happened, and then we'll turn this over to the mayor.
Test. Yep. Okay, now I figured it out. Okay, so we went over some of the details at the previous meeting, but so, long story short, there's a couple basics you need to understand. You know, the main purpose of a water tower is not just storage, it's the elevation of the tower. I can store water on the ground. And so the, the height of that tower is what dictates your system pressure. So if you want one PSI, you have to raise that water two point three one feet. We want it sixty PSI, so we have to raise it a lot higher than that. That tower is pretty much your pressure safety blanket across your system, and water towers need maintenance, just like everything else. And we have a contract with McGuire Iron and Steel where basically it's a five-year contract. So for the first four years, they are cleaning and inspecting, but they're not, they're doing all that live. So they have a submarine, they drop on the top of the tank, they basically vacuum out water, yada, yada, yada. The fifth year is where you have to take the tower offline, and that's where they do a full paint, and then they do also any steelwork, anything like that that you need at that time. So that was scheduled, of course, for this year. So basically, Monday morning, we had the tower offline about nine o'clock in the morning. So we were a hundred percent off of the water plant. And so what that works, how that looks, is you're essentially faking it. I'm running the water plant, I'm running pumps twenty-four, seven, to mimic what a full tower would be like. That presents operational challenges that we have to overcome. So one thing we have to do is we have to set up blow-off hydrants throughout our system, because if pressure spikes, you need to relieve that pressure before you cause major problems. We all, you know, we have to dial in our VFD, so those pumps kind of rev up and down. And at the end of the day, you set alarm points really tight so that we get calls if there's issues. And so I received a call right around ten thirty the night of, and it was a tower high alarm. And so basically, the set points we've set is it went outside of the range that I want to see it at. And so when I got down there looking at the information, it was saying the tower was at a hundred and fifty-three feet, which typical high alarm is a hundred and forty-nine feet. So I was about four feet off of my normal operating pressures. So not alarming, but still enough. I wanted to get the call. So I was literally in the process to kind of throttle down the plant a little bit more, and then I watched our skating system just go down. You know, and the tower went to zero, and that's the indicator of a very, something took all of the pressure that the plant was creating. Within a matter of minutes, I'd received probably about twenty phone calls, and thankfully, the one I answered was county dispatch. And basically, they were, someone had called because they were standing there and they watched a main break. And it was, if you don't know, six fifteen East Street, the apartments off of East Street. Behind those apartments is an alleyway where we have a twelve-inch main that loops to the south of town. That twelve-inch main is tied to the fourteen-inch, which is essentially tied to the water tower. And that's what went late at night. So that's where the fun started. At that point, it was, you know, we attempted to shut it off, get it isolated. Of course, twelve-inch old pipe valves don't work, so naturally, you know, it resulted in system loss without being able to isolate and get system back immediately. So the next phases there were getting emergency locates called in, getting crews to help. That's where Absolute, they're a huge crew that we rely on, because a job like that is outside of our capabilities of doing ourselves. So Cody, he was able to help, he was the first one there. He was basically doing the digging. We were doing the whole work. We got it so that we could limp by until we could get the proper repair sleeves. Essentially, we were fixing it live, and the sleeve we had, we were not going to be able to get on properly live. We got it on so we could get pressure back. And at that point, I was calling all the vendors I could think of to help us get the correct sleeve we would need to be able to get it fixed alive, because we were not shutting it down. And to get that sleeve, we ended up going through Brown Supply, and we ended up, kind of had to make a quasi-trade agreement with the city of Ames, because we could not get our hands on this sleeve. Closest one was Chicago. There was a couple in Oklahoma City, but Brown Supply had just recently sold a couple to Ames. So once we could guarantee some shipping times and guarantee that I could get them a sleeve in a proper amount of time, you know, they were able to, they were willing to let us have the sleeve they had in stock. And then, once we had that, that was about eleven o'clock, we were able to get that wrapped up. And then, that's where the testing, the boil water advisory is, obviously. We put that in place about five AM, give or take a little bit of time there. The main reason why it didn't go into place immediately is because we were responding to the break. So when I had a chance to breathe, that's where emergency management helped in, helped me big time getting that issued. Obviously, the first people I called was the Iowa DNR. They're the regulating agency over public water supply, so they need to be informed about that stuff. They were contacted immediately, and they were aware that, yeah, you're not going to get it issued until you get, get started and get working on it. Any questions or anything like that specifically?
No, Jordan, thank you very much for your concise rep.
I mean.
All of you.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's the first boil order we've had in a long, long, long time.
But it was a boil advisory.
Right. That's right. Advisory, not an order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you did a good job, everyone.
It, it was a hassle to have to play with the water, but we know it was so much more work for you folks, and we appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you very much.
Yes. And I, I would like to take a, just a moment to echo what Jordan said, and specifically, I'll miss some people, but there's a handful of people I'd like to recognize for the work they did. Jordan, of course, for handling the whole situation as well as he did, and, and keeping the community comfortable. The city of Ames, definitely for them pitching in and, and working with us on this. The, the rep from Brown Supply who helped negotiate the deal, if you will, Absolute and all their employees, but Cody, especially you, for working with us on the, on this process. But it was all, the people that you were working with from your unit, we appreciate all their help, without trying to name each and every one of them. But it was a long, it was a long night and day for, for you guys, too. Our Water Department staff, because they, they pulled together quickly. When I got up in the morning, I can look out at our water plant, and I think every city pickup was parked over there at about five fifty in the morning. So thank you. And Brian Paul from Pausik Emergency Management for your help. Rachel Kinnick from the Chamber, helping with the communications area. Our own city administrative staff from Communications, as well as handling all the calls that people were making and, and questions that were flowing this direction. And definitely Hy-Vee for coming so quickly with several semi-loads of water. And I know it's probably in their business plan to do this, but the fact that they reacted so quickly and were here. And then the people who volunteered to help unload that water, because those vehicles were parked out there in a hot, hot day, and we were moving them through very, very quickly. So all of those people, I, and I'm sure I've missed somebody, but I want to make, on behalf of the council, make recommendation to those people and thank them very, very much for their work. And Pausik Dispatch. Thank you. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. That completes my report.
Glad we only had to do it one time. I'd like to live the rest of my life.
Yeah.
And never do that again.
That completes my report.
You very much. Thank you, committee members. Good job. Report from Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met tonight at five thirty, had two items and one inquiry. The first item is consider a request from downtown merchants to close Main Street from Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue, July twenty-third, from seven to five for Ridiculous Day. And on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
White.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the second item is, that's going to be a busy day in Grinnell. It's to consider approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Rec for Blues for Grinnell, which is July twenty-third that night. So you'll have something during the day, and at night, you'll have a Blues concert. So on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please, Ann.
White. Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And our inquiry was emailed that the chief had received from Ryan Ferguson in regard to a noisy car in the downtown.
More than one.
More than one. Cars in downtown and throughout the town, what we could do about that. So we can't take any action on this, but we will bring this to our committee at our next meeting and see what we can do. And the chief was going to see what he can do, talk to the city attorney about our noise ordinance. So here again, I'd say if you hear something and see something, everyone has a little phone in their hand almost all the time. You could almost take a picture for us. So thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, report from Planning Committee.
Great. The Planning Committee only had one thing on our agenda, and that is to discuss parking for the Merge Development Project on Main Street. And we can't take any action on this tonight, but we did have a little discussion, and I'm thinking, I know Brent is from the, are you guys also Merge? Okay, so I will give you a chance to, to share as well. So basically, we have kind of gone a little bit back and forth with parking, underground parking on this project, and it's kind of back. Oh, okay, okay. So the, this is to, to do possibly underground parking in the Merge Development Project. And although this has some cost, it also has a lot of benefits. It does perhaps push the time, well, not perhaps, it does push the timetable back some as well. So that is something that we need to think about, but I think it is a positive for all involved. And so we have started conversations, and will continue those conversations about what might be possible in terms of help from the city, or possibly from other folks in the community to make something happen, and if we can, help support this underground parking to add that to the project. Brent, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, you did a great job. It's, it's hard. It's been a long path to get to today, and we're, we're at the point we're ready to dig, put the plans as it is. And adding the parking back in, it certainly sets back almost six months. So I think the team is, they, we just want to do the right thing, even though it might be six months. But if, if parking wasn't correct for this building, we want to look at doing it underground. The next building is something we can consider as well. But at the end, if we're talking about a building that's going to be here for a hundred years, let's do it right the first time. We're all in the, hearing what you think is the best thing for this, for work, we'll go either way.
All right. Any questions from the council about this?
We appreciate you considering this time delay, because I think it's a, a change in our downtown streetscape that we really need to be mindful of for everyone. And I appreciate your willingness to look, and if it delays your project, it will, in the long run, I think, be a good thing. So thanks for being considerate of us and our downtown stores.
All right. That is the report for the Planning Committee.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, committee members. Excuse me. Next item is a reading of, third and final reading of an ordinance. Actually, we have two. The first, ordinance number fifteen fourteen, an ordinance amending provisions pertaining to water rates. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
White. Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes. The second is a third and final reading of ordinance number fifteen fifteen, an ordinance amending provisions pertaining to sewer user recharges. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion?
Call for question.
Roll call, please.
Heffley Worley.
Yes.
Guard.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Bly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, uh, inquiries. Do we have any inquiries?
He's doing.
You're welcome.
Where's the? Did you set it?
Uh, I am Alex Novak with.
You have to, you have to have it more close.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You can, it can lay down. The thing can sit down and you can stretch the cord out.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We have a level of technique.
All right. Are we on? Can you hear me? All right. I'm Alex Novak with GSS. Uh, we are based in Urbandale, Iowa. We are working with US Cellular. Uh, we've been discussing, uh, a project with Tyler for, uh, the past few months. We are helping US Cellular develop, uh, small cell nodes within the city of Grinnell. Uh, we have fourteen nodes that we are proposing within the city. Uh, nine of them are on Alliant poles. We are co-locating, uh, on Alliant poles. But five of them, um, as we understand it, uh, the city would like to discuss a little further those locations. We were anticipating having a formal spot on the agenda tonight, but apparently there was a little confusion and we didn't make it on the agenda. So I flew in from Dallas this morning. Boy, are my arms tired. And I talked to Tyler and, and he was very apologetic and, and with not getting us on the agenda. But he said, if I wanted to, I could still come in and, and chat with you folks, even though you wouldn't be taking any formal action tonight. You know, I could still kind of chat about the locations and how we arrived at those locations and, and kind of start the discussion.
Please, please feel free.
Absolutely.
So as I mentioned, you know, we have five nodes of the fourteen that, that we're looking at. Now these nodes are in primarily residential areas and really the, you know, the focus of that is residents need coverage in their, in their homes.
What's a node?
Thank you. I was just going to ask the same.
Great question.
No, I know a node, node, but I want to know your node.
Great. So a node, as we call it, is a small cell installation in this, uh, in this case, on top of a wood utility pole. And the node is actually a twenty-four inch canister antenna that sits atop the pole. So if you think of your traditional macro cell sites with big antenna arrays sticking up, not even close, right? So those, uh, those installations are designed to provide coverage. These installations are designed to provide capacity. So concentrated areas where users live, work, play, drive, um, lower to the ground, closer together. These types of installations really cover a matter of a few blocks, you know? And, and so the, the technical term is CRAN, centralized radio access network. That's what we're building to bolster US Cellular's coverage in Grinnell. This is going to be part of the existing four G network. It's not new coverage. It's not five G. It's improving the network that's already here, right? GSS currently is doing upwards of five hundred, between five hundred and a thousand of these nodes across Iowa right now in various markets for US Cellular. Our relationship with US Cellular goes back, we just celebrated our twenty and, twenty-year anniversary with US Cellular as, as our biggest client, uh, last year. So, um, we do everything for, for US Cellular from site acquisition, zoning and permitting, which is what I'm doing here. Uh, construction management, project management, environmental studies, things of that nature. So we're really kind of a full turnkey service provider, uh, for US Cellular. So this is, um, you know, one of our, one of our locations within Iowa where we have what are called a cluster of nodes. And, um, each of these will be a wood pole, ultimately owned by US Cellular. Because for various reasons that I will go through, Alliant wouldn't approve our co-location in each of these locations. So we got nine out of fifteen with, with Alliant, or nine out of fourteen with Alliant. Um, all, all within the right of way and all strategically placed so that we're not sitting right outside somebody's front window, right? You know, we're, we're sensitive to that. We want to not be in the view shed of somebody's property. Cause even though it looks like every other pole, it's still something new that, that people don't want to see and have problems with. So the first one, um, is, and, and I can have my, my associate Kevin here, uh, pass these out. Um, the first one is located right about thirteen forty-seven, Fourth Avenue West. Uh, the existing poles weren't viable from an Alliant standpoint. And we note the, uh, the location here for the proposed spot. And you can see kind of a, you know, straight on view and then an aerial view where the, where the pin is located. This is, uh, big tall Jordan. You ever heard of the crop guy? And all of these are going to be very similar. They're all standard utility poles. Um, nothing crazy with regard to a difference in height as to what's already there. Um, we, we design these things to kind of blend in with the character of the neighborhood. So it's not to stick out like a sore thumb. Um, so the second one you'll see is six eighty-nine Hamilton Avenue. Uh, again, no co-locatables, uh, in the area. We placed this one to avoid the, uh, the state of, state right of way, which, you know, I mean, is not our ultimate preference to be in there. It's just, it's a tougher process. Um, but again, we picked out a spot that is not in the view shed of any residences and, uh, yes.
Sorry. Is the pole as tall as a regular utility pole? So it just blends in? Okay. It doesn't stick out. Okay.
Correct. Correct. And in a lot of locations where, you know, we're going in the right of way, we try to match what's, what's already there. If we're going on a pole that has a lumineer on it, we'll put a lumineer on it. If it doesn't, we won't, you know? We don't want to change the character too much. Are your, are your poles freestanding? I mean, no guy wire. No guy wires. And that's, that's a great question because Alliant will not allow us to co-locate on any of their poles that have a guy wire on it.
Well, explains these locations.
Yeah. Well, I know they're real guy wire. That's a real, oh, nether kettle of fish. Yeah. Right. Exactly. So the third location, uh, is located near three ninety-seven Washington Avenue. Uh, the nearby pole that's there is what's called an end of the line pole where the service kind of terminates and it does have a guy wire. So that's why we got denied on that location. And again, choosing this one, as you can see on the aerial, and we're focusing on the yellow pin on the aerial, not the red cross. The red cross represents where US Cellular's engineers, that's their, you know, their, their wish list. That's their perfect location. So as long as we're within a half a block to a block of that, we're, we're. It's, it goes like this. Here's highway six. And it goes that way. The, uh, the fourth one is located near, uh, six forty-seven Washington Avenue. Um, the existing poles around this area are very busy. We've got primary on there. Uh, just really no good options for us to co-locate there. So as you can see, we've got a, an open space that we picked out and, uh, again, trying to stay out of direct line of sight out of anybody's front window. And then the fifth and final one, uh, located near three thirty-three East Street. Um, the nearby poles in this area are all communication poles. They're not Alliant Energy. Now, US Cellular does not have any current agreements in place to co-locate on these comm poles. So that's why we're proposing, uh, our freestanding pole in this area. How, how much? You're putting fourteen of these in.
Mm-hmm.
Is it based on like, uh, business and apartment? Things rather than residential, like in my residential area on Tenth Avenue Place, but I'm two blocks from the college. And I'm two blocks from Orange Park, but I'm more residential where a lot of these are closer to high density.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is to spike that up. So like the apartments, if all thirty-four apartments all have US Cellular and they want it all.
Correct. Spenteen things at once, because that's what you do.
Yeah. So it's, it's really accounting for density of users. Where there's a concentration of users, uh, you know, the capacity of that network is drained. So these nodes are designed to add to that capacity. Exactly. Downtown could, might be ahead of ya. Nodes downtown. Yeah. Kevin, are we doing anything downtown in Grinnell? This is important.
Oh, okay.
He just died. Johnson, Neil Johnson lives here.
I didn't know he died.
He died.
I did know he died. Never mind.
Okay. Yeah. There's the.
So the nine, the nine, I understand, right? The nine that you have in addition to the one you showed us, those are going on existing poles.
Um, how many are exist, because I, there are some raw lands. There are some freestanding poles in there.
Okay.
That, you know, Tyler just didn't really have a question about. It was these five in particular.
But the other ones are already going on poles that are already there.
Some, yes, some of them. Am I, am I missing something? I would think with the college students, uh, sixth to tenth, Park to East, I don't see a lot. I mean, they're young and they would be, I hate to say this, more up on how to use their phone. You know, the, the coverage there, uh, might not be robust. There might, that might be close to a macro site. It might be a good area for a tower. Right. And there may, they, there may already be a macro site there that's serving the college. Cause I'm sure, you know, going into this, the college probably already had pretty robust coverage to begin with. Yeah. Okay. But it's all, you know, it's all driven by the RF engineers. They see where the network has weak spots, where it's stronger. And they design these clusters to basically fill in any gaps that are there.
Okay. So, uh, obviously we can't make a decision tonight.
Right. Right.
But I would like to ask a procedural question. I, I assume you're asking the council's permission to place those five poles?
Um. Y- yes and no. So the, the city's procedure, uh, small cells are, are, from what I understand, kind of a new animal here as they are in a lot of places. Um, so the procedure and, and, you know, Tyler can jump in if I'm, if I'm off base here, hasn't been really defined yet. Um, I know the Iowa state legislation, you know, passed a law with regard to placement of small cells in right of ways. And, um, you know, it does kind of limit the, the input that city governments can have. That being said, US Cellular is a, is a good partner and a good neighbor. And, you know, we're always willing to, to come in and, you know, talk about what we'd like to do and, you know, what, what it means to the city. Um, so, you know, I, I understand that from my conversation with Tyler today, um, there may have to be another meeting, uh, which is totally fine. But whatever process, you know, and we were unsure whether, and, and I know there was going to be some input from the city attorney on this. There was going to be a memo written that I haven't seen yet. Um, but whatever is determined that the process is, we'll abide by the process.
Yeah. Well, the reason I ask is in twenty-three years on the council, we've been, I remember being asked once, and that was for the cell tower over by the, uh, old public safety building. But other than that, we've never been asked to even our opinion on a light, well, light poles, because we have to work through Alliant Energy.
Right.
Uh, but no other poles, no other types have come before the council. So I'm curious, um, how Tyler and the city manager are working on this. I, it seems that they have, they would have this well in hand. We, I, we really appreciate you coming and briefing us on your, your concept and the plan. But, uh, Tyler, where, where does this fit together? Um, does the council even need to meet on this?
Uh, can we get you a record?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it is a little interesting in our code, um, under the, uh, regulations. And that's, uh, special use permits which are first heard by the funding of the mission and then ultimately approved by the board of adjustment. And there are certain things and uses, um, which are required to get a special use permit. And one of those is probably that label that has seen Asian towers. And, uh, it, it does specifically that those relate to, uh, radio and television. Um, and so, you know, there've been a few special use permits here. Um, for example, Alliant Energy, right there where their building used to be on Main Street, they put a tower that was, uh, specifically for them to be able to communicate with that, uh, substation there with their new building that they built, um, in one minute. And then I believe there's also another tower, I haven't, uh, I can't remember the name, but it's, uh, there's a older, manufacturing or industrial type, or the tower that was put back there. Those are really the only two special use permits, uh, related to towers that I have dealt with. The next one would likely be the upcoming new tower for the Pausik company, uh, their, their whole upgrade. Something like that. Uh, so yeah, it's a little interesting, you know, two small cell towers, uh, are explicitly defined in our going regulations that they need to be a special use permit. I kind of went back and forth on that, but ultimately I guess we decided no, they don't. So there's other documentation, uh, that may be allowed to kind of explain a little bit more on the limited authority that cities really have related to the construction poles when proposed new poles are being applied. And this is all really just interstitial at this point. And we'll be making a decision on it.
Tyler, where do we, this is Alex. Where do you stand on the, the?
Use your microphone. He can't hear you.
Tyler, where do we stand on, on the, uh, city attorney issuing the, the memo that you had mentioned?
I, uh, I heard that it was coming, but not the last time. Um, I don't know what information and, and things is really relevant or new starting to come out of that just based on sort of the fact that we forward on the mission that we have mounted in addition to the mission provided, uh, at the state of central entry related to this.
Do you have a timeframe that you're looking at?
As soon as possible.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're, we're look, coming up on, you know, we want to have the cluster on air, built in on air, um, in a little over a year.
I'm just curious.
That's unreasonable, actually.
Yeah.
I'm sure we're going to get questions, but I looked at the last map that came through. And can you explain what, because we're probably going to get questions, why there's nothing north of, um, Sixth Avenue?
You know, i- it's really just what the end, the radio frequency engineers determine needs to be installed. Um, it's not just a blanket thing everywhere. It's possible that that section of town is covered by a macro site to the north and it doesn't have any capacity issues there.
Okay.
And I think we do have a lot more, um, as, as we well know, a lot more multiple family hous- um, housing in the, um, south side of town. And so my guess is that meets a need that doesn't exist on the north end of town. We have many fewer, uh, multiple family housing units there.
Yeah. You look at, you know, housing like that, multiple devices in every unit, you know, guaranteed. Um, yeah, the, the network gets stressed pretty, pretty quickly.
Yeah. I mean, I think it is only good that we are addressing the south side of town, because I think sometimes, um, they feel as if they are not as well taken care of. So I actually think this is, this is very positive.
Well, that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any other questions.
Anything from anybody?
No sir.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate.
Thank you for your time.
The detailed update. Thank you. We'll be, we should be able to work through our process and move on this, I would think. So thank you.
We, we appreciate your help. Very much.
Thank you very much.
We of course can't make a decision tonight, but I think I can speak for the council and say you probably don't have to fly here from Dallas to make another presentation. We could probably work this out pretty easily.
But we'd like to have you come back.
Yeah. I'll tell you, I, I've been doing this. I'm in my twenty-second year of doing this. And I started in, in two thousand and the first market I did was all across Iowa for Nextel Partners, if you remember that.
Yes.
So, uh, I've been to Grinnell several times in my, in my career.
And we have nice places you can stay while you're here.
I, I ate at a nice, my favorite authentic Mexican restaurant in Grinnell is a little place called Taco John's right over there that, uh, that I took my friend Kevin to. So it was great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else for the good of the cause?
If we're not, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.